Make that happen. All right, so thank you all for being here today. I think you can tell from all the introductions, there's a lot of interest in this topic. And of course, those of you that know me know that this is a very important topic for me. Our Albuquerque Burnley County Air Quality Control Board is really important for the public health and safety of our community. And they have done an amazing job over the years on many rule makings. And they, we have such amazing people who are volunteers. They don't even get a per diem. They are just volunteers who give so much of their time and energy and expertise to help us. And they have been treated pretty poorly recently. And so I, I've gotten a lot of questions about what's going on. And I wanted to just bring the expert here to you all. And so I'm going to introduce Maxine Paul. She is the Chair of the Albuquerque Burnley County Air Quality Control Board. She has been amazing over the past many months. And I'm just, she's a real asset to our community. We're really lucky to have her here today. We're going to turn it over to her, let her talk us through what's happened, what might be coming next. And then we will do Q and A at the end. So just hold your questions until the end. Maxine, thanks for being here today. Right over to you.
Thank you so much, Councilor Pfebelkorn. That was a super kind introduction. And I would preface it with saying that I'm not necessarily the only expert on this. This is, this whole process has been a team of very dedicated people. Some have worked on these issues for decades. So, you know, I'm just one piece of the puzzle. So, um, yeah, I'm Maxine Paul, I'm the Chair of the Albuquerque Burnley County Air Quality Control Board, at least for another month. My term, my second term ends, I was appointed by Mayor Keller and City Council in 2020. Yeah, in April, I will be, my term will be expiring. Just a little about me, I work for a small employee owned consulting firm doing climate decarbonization work, environmental work for local governments, labs, and private companies. I previously helped build an environment division, including an air quality program for local tribal government. Before that, I worked for the State's Air Quality Bureau, and I've been working on managing and reducing emissions for a while. So I'm here to provide a quick review of what's going on with the Joint Air Quality Control Board lately, as the counselor said. First, I thought I'd just talk about what the Joint Air Quality Board is, which I'll just abbreviate since it's mouthful. Burnley County Air Quality Control Board, right? First, you'll notice that it is Burnley County and Albuquerque. It is a joint board, so it represents both the county and, and the city in its jurisdiction. So I know there's someone on the call, I think it was John, who said he was unincorporated in the county, but he is represented through appointees by the Burnley County Commission to the board. The powers of the board are quasi legislative and quasi judicial. So that means basically two things. The legislative part is that the board can pass regulations, which you may know, and that the board decides permitting appeals. That's the judicial part. So, yeah, it's a, it's an independent board. It's a little different than other boards through the city because of that dual jurisdiction. And it's governed by the State Air Quality Control Act. The board has historically passed a number of different regulations, including regulations around wood burning stoves, car emissions. I forget if it was 2020 or 2021, or even 2022, but while I was in the board, we passed the first advanced clean cars rule for the state in a joint hearing with EIB. And to talk about what we've passed lately and what's been lately, I'll just start by saying last November, we passed the second round of clean cars for the state in a joint hearing with AIB, EIB. So that's Advanced Clean Cars II, which addresses cars and trucks that, you know, you drive as a passenger regularly. HDO, heavy duty omnibus, and ACT, Advanced Clean Trucks. So that regulation decreases the source of many emissions. So your, your criteria air pollutants, the things that make you sick, but also one of the mobile sources in total, or one of the largest sources of greenhouse gases nationally, at the state level and at the city level. I think that the city's 2017 emissions inventory had on run emissions at something like 32% of total carbon dioxide equivalent. So it's a big deal to pass that. And, you know, it's not, it's not the only thing that matters in terms of climate. There's a lot of other things that need to be done, but that's, that's a, a big one. And it's a little bit strange, you know, you notice I mentioned it's a joint, it's a joint hearing. So the Clean Air Act requires that states only have one rule statewide under those kind of regulations. I, I forget whether there's a lawyer would be able to tell you better. I think it's Section 117 or something like that. And that's why it's a joint hearing. So because there's the, the jurisdiction within Burnley County and the city for the board, and then everywhere else that's not tribal jurisdiction is a state, NMED, and EIB for regulations. So now getting to probably what you're here for is the, the hearing held in December last year, the HEI hearing. And I want to start by saying, you know, the, the hearing was brought by the community, which is something that is allowed under the board's rules. It's not common. It was the first time that the board held a hearing to, to consider a rule brought by a community group, not by a regulator. Usually in situations like this, these rules are, are brought by the department that would be enforcing them. And then in December, we, yeah, we, this, this is December 2022. The board voted to have, to hold this hearing, to consider the regulation. And we have had the power to accept it, reject it, change it. You know, we, the, as you, as you know, if you followed, you know, the, the holding of the hearing was not at all a, something that meant that the board, you know, was, was, I think that, as, I'll, I'll get to it, but basically like, this was a very unique circumstance. In, in a lot of cases, you have a regulation and it's sort of an up or down because the regulation has been developed through the department, right? But this was not that circumstance. So, uh, yeah, my predecessor Chair created this committee to, for EHD to interact with the community, to address the community's environmental justice concerns. So this, this, this committee happened the year before that, that, the year before the regulation was proposed to the board to, to have a hearing. There was a, a, a committee created by this board, by the air board, in order to make space for the regulator and the community to talk and to create something, if something was to be created, to solve a long, long-term environmental justice issue that, you know, I had heard about for four years, or at that point, it was two or three years, but other members of the board had just been hearing about it, hearing about it. Folks had come back and back, and, and it seemed like nothing was getting done. So, um, that's just my, you know, this is just, I'm only doing this short piece of history. My understanding is, and from, from my own perspective, and the, but my understanding is the community has asked for the city to address this for, you know, over a decade. And that there is, and you can look this up on your own, there's a lot of public information about a Title VI, which is an environmental justice case that was brought against the city. And so, so now to get to the most recent news, in the month before the hearing, so this is like November, December last year, 2023, after a, I skipped the whole year-long pre-hearing process, where the board heard concerns from different stakeholders, including industry, community groups, and institutions to make more space for more input. I believe there were a number of different versions of the regulations in the docket. Year-long process, the hearing was scheduled for December. So a year after it was first, accepted, a year after we first said we were gonna hear this regulation and consider it. And in that month, right before the hearing, the City Council passed these, this ordinance and resolution. And the ordinance and resolution's effect was to abolish the board. It, it didn't say abolish the board, but essentially it was like a moratorium that would, you know, take away, any, that would mean the board couldn't meet until February, so post-hearing, right? And, and, you know, remove the members from the city, the city-appointed members in the board. Remembering that this is a joint board with the city and county. But because the city has four seats and the county has three seats, the impact of that would be to make it so the board couldn't function for this, the time period of the hearing, right? So, uh, I think the, the sequence is, so that was passed, the mayor vetoed it, and then it went back to council. And a council, and councillor Pfebelkorn can, can fill some of the details that I'm missing in if necessary. Back to council, the council overrode the veto, but not, not, not your councillor. And that day was the first day of the HEI hearing. So that was a Monday of a, of a week-long hearing, that ended up being a weekend day. However, the board, I, I went to that meeting and mentioned you really shouldn't be doing this in the middle of a proceeding. Like, this is, the process has been very fair and balanced. There's, there's a process already in place, so what you're doing is really undermining the current process. But, so, uh, what we realized is, with the help of our, you know, fantastic legal counsel and teamwork, was that we had enough time to still hold the hearing according to the city's own charter, because regulations don't go into effect for, what, about five days after the notice is published in the state records office. So essentially, we were in a lame duck session. We were still able to act in our roles. But that's not how City Council, uh, some of the City Council councillors and attorneys wanted to fight us on that. And so we went to court. And I'll get into the legal part next. But first, I'll just talk about what happened in that, in that, in that, in that hearing. So we, first, what happened was because we had that time limit artificially imposed on the hearing, we had a limited amount of time to work with. And like I said before, this is a very unusual thing to have a board really have to work with, rather than an up-down vote, but like, think about the whole problem, which is a very complex one, and come up with the right solution in our negotiations, or in our, in our discussion or deliberations. And so we did that. We worked, you know, for, for hours and hours to try to get something that was fair and it would help reduce air pollution in these overburdened areas, and it wasn't burdensome to, to businesses. And I'm pretty proud of what came out of it, despite a very artificially limited, you know, that deadline there, we worked right down to 8:00 PM, I believe it was Monday night. And it would've been nice not to be restrained in time, but we did what we could. What we had was, uh, this regulation has the recognition of overburdened areas, mapping of them by the city, and a standard of control technology that's required there. Before this, there's no standard of control technology for minor major sources, or specifically the minor sources in that, in that area. And the standard means that, you know, these areas now have to go through the same kind of review to make sure that folks who are polluting are using up-to-date technology that's readily available, rather than getting something from, you know, that someone's used old thing that's, that ends up happening sometimes to, to, to control some of these sources, if that's the cheapest thing to do. So it's, and it's something that, you know, if you review this, it's, it's a really reasonable standard that's already done in many other states. And it seemed like a pretty obvious thing to do. So, um, so back to the legal side. And I'll say, there's another thing that's, the, the, sorry, the regulation also, I think what was negotiated or discussed in our, in our, in our deliberations was also addressing particular carcinogens that are volatile organic compounds, like a specific list of them, and having to do best available control technology for those sources, not just in overburdened areas. So, or use that standard analysis. So then, so to get back to the legal case, so this has happened, we've had the hearing. In the meantime, in the middle of the hearing, a council files a suit against the city with the argument that they're not allowed to abolish a board that's independent of them, but it's also representative of the interests of the county unilaterally, and in effect disenfranchising the residents of Burnley County. And in January, a judge granted our preliminary injunction against the city. So that means that we, the judge saw our argument and said, it's likely that they will win in a merits hearing, so it's likely that our argument is the right argument. And so the board was reinstated, so the ordinance and resolution are no longer in effect. It seems like as far as the next steps here, oh, and I should note, Burnley County joined us in that injunction. And it seems like the next steps here are that, you know, one option is that the city and the county can work together over the six, next six to nine months or so, maybe creating a joint powers agreement, or regulations that are consistent with state law. Or they can continue to duke it out in court. But like the judge said, we are likely to prevail there on the merits. So that would be the legal case, and hopefully I gave you guys a good overview. I know it's a little bit complicated, it got complicated for us too. So, yeah, I'm, I'm happy to open it up for questions and turn it back over to the councillor.
Thank you, Maxine. If you have a question, raise your hand. Remember, you can do that on your reactions and then raise your hand, or you can just pull up your hand, like councillor Gipson just did. Yes, ma'am.
Who did you call on?
You.
Oh, okay. So you said something right at the end that I, I think I misunderstood, but I'm not sure. You said, you said that you were advised that, their quality board was advised that the, the suit may not find in your favor on the basis of merit?
The opposite of that.
The opposite. Oh, I'm so glad to know that. Thank you very much.
I have the injunction, councillor, I'm happy to share it with you. But it, it is very clear, the judge says that there is a high likelihood that the city's suit would be overturned on the merits of the argument provided by the county and the air quality board. And that's why he issued this injunction. And the language is pretty strong. Seems pretty clear to me that he thinks we are on the right side. And I say we, because I feel like I'm more on the side of the air quality board. I'm certainly not part of the city's ridiculous legal shenanigans. All right, Margaret Bell, and then we'll go to Jean.
Yes, thank you. So two questions. One is, the regulation that came out of the hearing, has that been implemented? Or does it have to wait till the court finishes its, your suit at the court? And secondly, are you conducting other hearings at this time? I'd read that the auto dealers are lobbying the air board about the clean car rules and wondered if there was something going on there that we need an update on. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, um, thanks, Margaret. So, um, the out, so the, I believe there was a, a little bit of a delay in the implementation in the regulation, because it takes some time to, for anyone to sort of create the map, publish it, make everyone aware of it, of where the overburdened areas are. So I'm not sure how exactly if that would line up, but it, it seems like it's very possible that, that the parties won't have to go to court, in which case it would continue on schedule, I believe. And then as far as the auto dealers, yes, they're, this is, so they're entitled to ask for stay. They have to go to the boards first. And if the boards were to, you know, not grant them a stay, then they would have to, then they could go on to an appeals court. But they have to address both boards. So we, in our previous meeting, you know, I was, I felt like this was a, a sort of a similar issue to what happened at City Council, where if our board was to even address a stay, then we would be making a decision, because both rules have to be the same, right, for the whole state, which is outside of our jurisdiction. So, uh, so, and, and I think that, yeah, it, so we're, we've, we've reached out to EIB, and they have to have, so we're gonna let them address it, and then we'll address it ourselves after we hear from them.
I think it's just important to know that, you know, the fact that the EIB or the air quality board is hearing this is not something that should necessarily be an alarm. They are required to, to consider requests for stays like this. But, you know, check the newsletter, because you'll get more information as that moves forward for sure. All right, Jean.
Yes, thank you very much for this explanation about what's been going on. Like, probably many Albuquerqueans, we think we're fairly well-informed about what's going on, but I don't remember hearing much about your board ever before this latest controversy. I mean, it just, you just didn't make the news very much. And so I would like to have some background on the whole environmental justice movement in this local area. And what, what are you talking about? The maps, and how do you know if, if an area is truly overburdened? How is that determined? And is that subject to debate? Or is it independent criteria? Or, you know, how does that work? Can you explain?
Sure. So if you want to read the regulation, it was filed, so it's a public record. And you can go through and see, see it yourself, see it for yourself. So the, the regulation that came out of the hearing is pretty simple, pretty straightforward. It defines overburdened areas as the top 20% in health equity variables. I'm not using the right wording here, but basically taking into account some of the public health factors that would implicate an overburdened area, discriminated against area, that kind of a thing. And the top 20% for those factors then gets these extra protections. And, and it also, the other, other types of sources that get these extra protections under this permit type are sources that emit some of these specific volatile organic compounds that are common. For the history of environmental justice issues in Albuquerque, you know, I've learned a lot over the last four years, but I'm not the person, I think, who would be the, the best to describe that. I think that you should, my, my suggestion would be to go talk to some of the leaders who brought the regulation forward. You know, I can give you my perspective from the regulatory and judicial side of things, rather than that full history. So I would, I would reach out to them at, um, Mountain View, Los Hardines, and NMELC.
Okay, so can I just follow up with one question? Is that possible? Okay, in terms of this top 20% of these variables, I mean, does a, a group like this Mountain Air Group, for example, do they apply to be considered overburdened? Or does your agency look at the criteria and check to see which areas within your jurisdiction would actually qualify?
Yeah, that's a great question. So the regulation is, requires the department, the Environmental Health Department, to create the map and then publish the map online and make it accessible for both the public and for the industry that will be regulated in advance of then implementing the regulation as part of permitting.
Okay, so all these, all these people who are objecting, they've had an opportunity to see the map, to decide whether they're, they fit. I mean, it, the map isn't like, it's a plop on them to say, oh, wow, you're regulated now more than you would be if you were next door. I mean, so they've had the chance to, to comment on this in the past. Is that right?
The map isn't published yet. They will have, there'll be, you know, I think it's a half of a year period for them to have notice of it. There, there were in the, in the hearing, there were a lot of different versions of the map. So I think there's a, I think there's some direction as to what the map will look like. But, no, we, one of the difficult things about governance is that you can't necessarily predict, and you don't necessarily want to dictate, at least in my opinion, you don't want to dictate too much exactly the technology in the form, because it might get better over the next five to 10 years. And if, and if you, if you say you have to use this specifically, and this, this is the exact amount, and, and this is the technology that you have to use, there might be a better way to address that in the future. And then you're stuck with the old one, and then you have to sort of, you know, work it into the old one. So we, you know, didn't, we, we chose a number that was similar to what EPA chose, but to just address those top overburdened areas.
Thank you.
Jean, I'm gonna add into that, that, you know, I think it's really important to understand that the proposal that came forward was for a regulation. And the regulation that resulted is this map. But all of the people who opposed the regulation were parties to the hearing. They had multiple attorneys, they had hours and hours and hours of examination and cross-examination. They had an authority to intervene and participate in all the year-long lead-up to the hearing. So I just want to make it really clear that everyone had a say, everyone had input. And the idea that they didn't, which is what's been presented in the media, is absolutely untrue.
Thank you.
I would follow up to say that our, what was passed was a very narrow version of what was presented. You know, without re-examining the entire hearing. And, and I think a lot of it was recorded, and I think you can, the docket is certainly public, so you can go back through. But there were some very complicated regulations that were gonna cost thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars for application. And this was something that was much more reasonable, that many, the consultants had already done many times before that said could take them a week or two, and it's done in, in a bunch of, like I said, neighboring jurisdictions. Even Texas does this, so. Yeah, the, the whole unreasonable argument was wrong.
And then I also just want to go back to Jean's original comment, which was, you know, I've never heard of the air board before. Let me just say, you know, I think that says a lot. The air board's been around since the 70s. So as long as I've been alive, this board has been there just functioning, protecting our air quality, protecting public health, making sure that we have breathable air that, you know, meets all the national requirements. And it wasn't a problem, until we had one city councillor who has a problem with clean air. And so it's really important to remember that, you know, they've been chugging along, and I kind of think it's great that you hadn't heard of them before, because that means they were doing their job without causing much turmoil. And so that, just, just to set that perspective out there for folks. All right, any other questions? All right, I will add just real quickly, because I think that folks might want to know kind of the legal tape from the city. The City Council President and Vice President have now reached out to the county, and they are looking to reintroduce the legislation that I had worked with the county on and was voted down originally, that said, no, let's not do this craziness, let's not abolish a board and reconstitute it and put a hold, but let's form a working group between the city and the county to say, if there are any issues that need to be dealt with, let's set up a working group of representatives from the city and the county and the mayor's office, and sit down and go through those issues and think through what we can do to solve it. There have been some issues around, you know, the city for some reasons, and sometimes didn't want to pay for really important things like transcripts and little technical things like that. And so I would work with the county, we had come up with that. little technical things like that. And so, uh, I would work with the county. We had come up with that, that, those mirror resolutions. The county was gonna pass one, we were gonna pass one, the county passed theirs, and then we, the city council turned mine down. Um, but now that there has been this, um, injunction where, and I, again, I quote, the judge says there's a high likelihood that the county's gonna win. Um, they have now reached back out and I'm told that they are going to be using my original bill um, sometime soon, which makes me laugh. Uh, but, so that is, that is what I know. I have not seen that come back. Um, I was reached out to to say, you know, hey, do you want to co-sponsor your bill again? And I said, wh- why? I, I, we've, we've, we're winning. Um, but, uh, so that might be coming back up. Um, there are bills that have been proposed and then pulled from, uh, Commissioner Casada and, um, Councillor Pena. So I don't know what's happening with all of that kind of legislation. There's still just a lot of balls in the air around this. But the reality is, the original air board is back in place and they are functioning as they should be and they will continue to do that work, um, for the foreseeable future. And I also think it's really important that everyone on here know that as long as the city keeps fighting this fight, um, the city is paying for contract attorneys to make their case. The city is also legally required to pay for the air board's attorney. So we are spending ridiculous amounts of money fighting a fight that is clear we are going to lose. And so I just think you should all understand what your city councillors, not me, I've voted against this every single time. Um, but I think you, you under- you need to understand the situation that is going forward. And this could be a year, two-year, three-year battle where you, the taxpayers, will be paying for attorneys on both sides. So, I just want you to know that. Uh, yeah, Michelle.
Um, I've, maybe you didn't say the real main thing is that people who lived in areas that had a lo- had very bad air quality, had been fighting for years to not have more polluting things put in their neighborhood, that that's what this is really about. That might not have been said plainly. And now they have the right to do that, right?
Well, they always had the right to do that. I, Maxine, did you want to? I just, I want to make it clear that citizens have always had and should always have the right to petition air board for environmental justice concerns. But, I'll let you.
Michelle, I like how you put that. That's, it's a really good point. I think sometimes I forget that not everyone was spent most of two months only working on this. Um, yeah, uh, no, that, you're right, the, uh, the, the the, um, citizen groups in the South Valley have been experiencing many like many sources of pollution, many sources of air pollution for a long time and, um, you know, filed a case with EPA, a Title VI case alleging discrimination. I, uh, it's, it EPA, you know, took it up and I think it sort of remained um, not closed. Uh, I'm not sure if the hearing ended up in being closed, but the point being that, yeah, you're seeing you know, more, um, more pollution sources, um, in, or in these areas where, uh, you know, where you could see a case of environmental racism.
It seemed like some of the folks who weighed in, this would never affect, like the Air Force or the university. And they really strongly objected when, um, it, it was, seemed bogus to me that they were doing that, because it just said you can't put more polluting things in an already polluted area and, um, it, it doesn't apply to them. And they were act- acting like it was a terrible burden and nobody could ever have anything approved again and blah, blah, blah. They, they overdid it, I think.
Yeah, I think our solution was pretty good, um, because I think none of them can really argue with, uh, something that's, um, that offers a higher level of protection for these neighborhoods. It, you know, it doesn't solve all the problems for sure. No one regulation can, but also I think this is a, this is a complicated issue that you see across the country. Um, that the, the frankly, the Clean Air Act isn't really set up to address, right? It's to, the Cleaner Act does a great job addressing big sources of pollution on a big scale. It doesn't do a good job of addressing, and it's not, it's, it, the way that it functions is harder to address smaller sources in neighborhoods. Um, and so, yeah, hopefully this is a step in the right direction. Um, but, um, yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a tough one, for sure.
Any other questions, comments? I, I'm, I will, let's see, we'll give you another second. I know if you're on the phone, sometimes it's hard to get up soon or off mute, so just jump in if you have a question or concern. Um, I will close with just saying, you know, I think, I think it's really important as citizens of our city and our county that we all understand that this proposal was brought forward. Six councillors ended up siding with, in, um, with the councillor who brought this forward originally. And, and I will point out that when this, when this was vetoed by the mayor, we had assumed that we had enough votes to uphold the veto. Um, because we should have had four votes to uphold that veto. And we had someone flip, and you all know who it was. And I think that it's really important to remember that elections matter. Um, this vote was inexcusable. The amount of money and time and disrespect to our highly qualified board members all came down to one person who voted the wrong way. And I think that we should all remember that, um, as, as we move towards next elections. Um, because it is, it has been horrible. And I will say that I went to, um, the hearing the night after our city council president showed up to disrespect the board members and, you know, just tell them that we are here for them, we support them. And, um, you know, the look on the air board's faces, they were very tired. They had been working so hard. And again, these are volunteers. And I just think it's really unconscionable how they were treated, so. Um, oh, and I see some more hands up, so I will go to Michelle and then Rachel.
Oh, there was another thing. It turned out that Dan Lewis has a conflict of interest that didn't come out. And he's, um, a principal in an oil and gas company or something like that, so he shouldn't have been voting on something that affected his business, but I don't think that came out.
Well, to be fair, he is no longer a principal in the oil and gas industry. He is now the state director for the asphalt, um, association. Um, and he got that job right after this bill was passed, the, the one that absolved that, or abolished the air board, so. Uh, Rachel. Yeah, go ahead, Miss Maxine, sorry.
I would just note that there were multiple asphalt companies that were part of the hearing.
Um, Rachel, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm coming from behind. We just happened to be at that city council meeting with my son's Boy Scout troop. And I have been trying to educate myself since and kind of catch up and learn. Um, so what you just said about the flip, where the veto wasn't able to be upheld, I guess I'm just looking for any understanding of how the heck that happened.
If I understood that, we would be more successful on council. Um, but I don't. Um, we should, you know, theoretically, we should have five votes, um, for the environment on city council. We have five Democrats. We have one Democrat that's never voted Democrat, so that's weird. Um, but the one that flipped was, you know, supposedly a strong Dem who supposedly cares about environmental justice. Um, and, uh, so you would have to ask that person, but more importantly, I think you need to remember this in the future and remind people of this, because this has been really horrible. Jean?
Yes, if we have time, I'd like to ask, uh, a question that Maxine may not exactly know, but you might know the answer to that, or Tammy might know. Um, I think the mayor's office sent out a notice that there were four positions uh, that you could apply for to be on the air board. And at first I thought, oh, I could do that. That sounds like something I'm interested in. I wrote a dissertation on air pollution in the oil and gas industry. I know something about that topic. But then I realized that the, the kind of backgrounds that they were asking for, I probably didn't qualify for. And so now I'm wondering, are we reconstituting the board now? Um, I mean, are these, what, what, what's the status of that?
Yeah, let me answer that question. So the injunction is that that, that is not the accurate requirements. Those are the requirements from the ordinance. Um, those requirements are not there anymore. Uh, they were, you know, uh, pretty narrow. I ha- I'm, as, I'm sure all of you know a doctor and you know how much free time they have, um, to be on a board. Um, but the, uh, the, um, yeah, the board that as it's constituted right now, uh, super like impressively, uh, 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 qualified, you know, I, I, you've probably all, if any of you've heard me talk about us, but like, we had, uh, uh, she just resigned after the, um, after the hearing, but, uh, Johnny Lewis is, is the, runs a toxicology center at UNMH that does environmental justice issues. Uh, you know, um, uh, Judy Calvin's a uh, environmental lawyer and has worked on environmental regulations for most of her career. Uh, we had a engineer and lawyer. Um, he's still on the board. Uh, we have a, um, uh, someone who writes permits and understands regulations for RICRA, so other toxic waste. Um, um, myself and then, um, you know, Kitty Richards, who's been in public health and worked for Burnley County, for, she's been on these kind of issues for thirty years. Uh, and, um, who am I forgetting? We got, um, oh, yeah. Oh, and then of course, um, uh, uh, Joseph Galuski, who's a professor of atmospheric science at U and M. Um, who is the only person who would fill one of the requirements according to the ordinance about a professor of air quality in the state. Um, or in the jurisdiction, sorry. Uh, so, uh, I think you got a call about that. It had to be on the board, actually, according to those regulations. But to answer your question more nar- more acutely, um, uh, that doesn't, that was either sent out as a, as a vestige of the old, of how, when they thought that was gonna take effect before the injunction or someone hasn't got the news yet. Yeah.
Yeah, so it, it actually.
Oh, and sorry, one last thing, sorry, sorry councillor. Um, so yeah, my term is up in April. Um, and I believe, uh, Alice Eberlein's term is also up, although I mean, he is probably applying again. Um, so there's at least one city spot and there is a county spot open now because of Dr. Lewis's resignation. So, um, apply.
Yeah, and I will just say that, the, the request for the four members, we had to send out because we hadn't gotten the injunction yet. And the resolution and the ordinance that city council passed said that we had, the mayor had thirty days to get new people with these really specific requirements appointed, or city council could appoint. And so there was, we were doing a lot of work to, to identify people that would qualify. Um, thankfully, the, um, the, uh, injunction came through and we don't have to do that. Because it, I will say it was impossible to find people that met these new requirements. Um, including, and I will just point this out because it's very frustrating to me, the ordinance that the city council passed said that one of the people on the air board has to be, you know, from the industry that is being regulated. And I, for one, am always opposed to people who are regulated, being the regulators. That is dumb, so. Uh, okay, we have four minutes. Any other questions for Maxine? Oh, yeah, Diane.
So, I don't know, this might be a little bit off talk, topic, maybe a bunch off topic, but there is a uh, a case between the US Supreme Court right now, I think they call it, they're referring to it as Chevron. And, um, if, if, uh, that is decided the way this court has been deciding things, the, um, administrative, very, very important administrative part of government, of federal government anyway, will be, will be greatly weakened and, and legislators will have to decide cases that, that, uh, that, uh, professionals have been deciding on these administrative boards. Is that going to affect us on, uh, like, in, in the, the air board? Does anybody know anything about?
That's a great comment. Uh, it's a travesty. That would be a complete, just having had this experience, uh, four years is like barely enough time to understand these problems, you know? So, I, I didn't, I didn't really understand like what the, um, well, I did, I mean, I've been in, in, worked in government for a while, but like it, the, you have to have experts on these things. You have to have people who are reading the two hundred, two hundred document docket.
Mm-hmm.
Many two hundred page documents in there. And if that's hard for a, for seven professional like people to do, um, then how could we expect a, a, a court to do, you know, uh, legislators to do it when they're at the whim of whatever political issue is going on? And as you just saw, there was like so much politics that just sort of, uh, that, that really limited the board's ability to be, um, to take the, like, time and to, to do, uh, to do a hearing in a way that was addressing facts and, um, you know, the, to have that, to have that space, right? Um, to, to be the professionals that we were. And, uh, yeah, that's, that is, is horrifying for, uh, for me and for others, the, the potential of Chevron. But I don't know how it would, I haven't thought, I haven't thought about how that would impact, uh, the city. Maybe the councillor has, has some ideas.
I've asked that question and I am waiting for, uh, a legal analysis, but I, I think the general idea is right now that it would have more impact on the federal front, that as long as the Clean Air Act is in place, we would not see a change to our air quality regulation process, but I think it's way too early to know, for sure.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I don't see any more questions. If you're having a hard time raising your hand, just come off mute and ask. Um, but I want to thank everybody for being here today. Um, lots of really good questions. And of course, I want to thank Maxine. She's been, um, an incredible leader throughout this entire ordeal. And I, I've been privileged to get to know her better and understand just how, um, incredibly dedicated she is to helping us, um, despite all of the, the, you know, poor treatment, she's still there. And still, still leading. And so we very much appreciate you. Thank you for giving us your time today. Um, we are gonna put this in, the link to this in our newsletter, so please let your friends and neighbors know so they can learn about this as well. And if anybody has any further questions, of course, you always know to reach out to me or Amanda. Um, and we will try to get you answers. And, you know, unfortunately, a lot of the questions that I get are like, why did this happen? I can't begin to answer that question, um, but I can try to help you understand ramifications or next steps. So with that, thank you all for caring about clean air. Um, thank you for being here and we will see you next month. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Tammy.
So much, councillor.